And we, we, we didn't look at this one, we looked at Commerce. We'd have to go back six, seven hundred feet of the medians in both, in all four directions. I should say north, south direction. To get, to get the turn lanes and everything. So the roundabouts can have a less impact on your median trees than a roundabout, than a roundabout would.
At our last meeting, there was a discussion, because we didn't have rights of way showing indoor property lines. The, I couldn't remember who was here. I don't remember who the engineer or who it was. But anyway, the issue was when you are coming northbound on Gateway, turning eastbound on Griffin. They were looking at, talking about the possibility of moving the entrance into the seven eleven further east. Well, when I went to, after that meeting, went home and went to LIPA. It looks like that entrance is already on CDD property. It's not even in, on, according to LIPA, it's not even on their own property to begin with. Does that bother anything, or is this design as is?
We're, we're planning on leaving it as is unless somebody tells us.
I have a feeling one of your guys found the same thing I found.
Okay.
It's, it's already off their own property.
Well, we're, we're putting, we're proposing to just leave it as is.
We don't want to move it further back toward the roundabout.
Right.
And I, I thought I had heard at a previous meeting that, so you've got your roundabout. In the middle of the roundabout, you've got open section. Or, I don't know what you call it, the.
It's actually, it's actually a planting area, the green area in the roundabout. The red in the area is what's called a truck apron. So the red is where a big truck, their back trailers are going to track over that red. It's not designed for cars, because it's going to be a bump, and you really won't want to drive over it with a bump, with a car. So you're gonna keep, you're gonna stay on the black pavement if a car, a semi is gonna, back end is gonna hit that red. The green is actually a planting area. And that's planted pretty heavily with bushes and trees to prevent you from looking ahead. If you come in the roundabout, we want you looking left. If you're not looking left, if you're looking, I don't want you to look at what's coming straight at you, you're looking at what's left. Because that's how it impacts you. So we plant that pretty full.
Can you provide some examples, just of, you know, what it may have looked like?
Well, what we've done is, what we said we'd do is work with, you know, Gateway.
It's pretty much an art, art deal, because it's landscaping.
But that's part, that's part of our cost. We're gonna pay for any landscaping. We have a landscaper, Bob DeBrock, on our end. And we'd like to work with whoever you, whoever you'd like to. We have a, a general design for these round, uh, landscaped islands. But we're certainly willing to work with, uh, Gateway on that.
But, but there's no concrete structures such as walls or anything like that?
There are trees, though.
Orange, frangible or?
You don't put monuments or any?
They don't, they can be, I've seen trees in there that would stop a car. Once they grow up big enough, you, you, we'll, we'll work with you, see what you like.
This one, I mean, the, just a smaller scale example, but if you go to a plantation in Crystal.
Sure.
It's, it's kind of the same thing. I mean, there's a couple of feet of tavers, and then there's some trees and grass in the middle.
This is fire. Right, now the fire department's gonna be there, so you're gonna be putting some lights up, right, some flashing lights?
No.
You know, so when the fire department comes out, there's not gonna be any way of telling all those people that they have to stop for the fire.
Uh, where they're coming out. Just so you know. They're, they're coming out over here. So they're gonna put their lights on, and cars coming down Fairway Lakes will see the lights and stop. Now, we haven't had discussions with whether they want emergency stop signs there, which we're certain of open to. But the fire departments pay for those. So if they want to pay for a flashing light that's flashing yellow all the time, and then it turns red when they come out, we're certainly open to it. First of all, we have to acquire the ability to be on that road, as we just talked about. And brought that up, that this is, uh, this is not our right of way right now, so we have to work past that. And then we'll work with the fire department. Out of the two roundabouts, we will need right, the only spot we really need right of way is in this south, this southwest corner. So we're gonna work with the fire department, get them their entrances and exits that they're looking for, so it functions well. We're gonna look for right of way, donation for right of way for that. And then if they, if they do want a signal, then we'll work with them on that too, but that's typically their cost. But we certainly would, we're not, we typically don't signal the fire departments, we work with them, if that's what they really want.
And, and just to kind of wrap this up, because we've got the rest of the meeting to get to. What comes next? What are, what are, what's the next step on working on Commerce legs?
So the, the big decisions that the county is looking for Gateway to make is, what do you want to do with the east section of the right of way, on Commerce? Do you want to convey it, easement, permit? The three options that we discussed. Um, and then the lighting is really kind of the two things for them to move forward with design, is, is they need to have a handle on that. Uh, the next step for us to do for Gateway is to continue our talks with the county and see what, nail down exactly what the improvements are on the Gateway side, uh, for that roundabout as well to be. And then we can give you a better idea of what, uh, costs you can expect to incur.
This is, Daniel, the, uh, street signs, we have the fluted design all the way around. I'm assuming that that's another one that, uh, we'll, we'll have to pay as the upgrade to the fluted design as opposed to the steel post, which are.
If you want the fluted design, we did that out in that, we'd have that separate, so we know exactly what the cost was for that.
Well, the street signs, I mean, the sign location isn't going to change, it's really just a different base. So, I mean, that, as far as design goes, that decision can be made way later on. The street lighting, I think, is more of a, you know, they need to figure out what they're designing now.
It's whether if you want, want it in the contract, or you want it good after the, after the work's done.
So that's kind of where we're at.
So are you going to bring back to the next meeting our three choices, and what the price tag's gonna be for those?
Um, well, uh, based on our discussion, whatever, based on the way that the county has, uh, stated, I guess. Um, whatever you do with that eastern right of way is not going to impact what improvements you are going to do inside of that roundabout, as far as utility work. So as far as three options goes on what you want to do with that eastern portion of the right of way. Uh, and, and what the county has said is basically, doesn't matter, you're still doing the utility improvements. So those costs are going to be those costs.
When, when, when do you all need a decision from us on that issue?
On the turning over?
Yes, the combination of turning over and the upgrades.
We'd like to have a decision in the next thirty days. Yeah, same, the same thing with the lighting.
Okay.
So for the, the utility work, um, when's the next meeting? We have a week off, and then it's the fourth or something like that.
The third?
Um.
We should be doing it at that meeting. It's pushing it if we go any further than that meeting.
Yeah, we would need to get you costs for that meeting. And then, um, we would need to, presuming that you guys want hires, of course. We would need to present you a scope and be to do the utility design for whatever the design is going to be. Uh, the challenge is, we're just not really sure what that design is going to be just yet. So once we figure that out, we can give you guys a proposal to do that design work. And then, uh, after that is done, then the county and Gateway can start working on, uh, the necessary legal agreements.
Yeah, and part of that discussion will be whether or not those utility lines are located by virtue of an easement, or just grant, you know, separately granted easement. Or a valid utility easement granted by recorded plat. It makes a big difference. Because if it's by recorded plat, then the authority, county could accept that.
We, uh, everything I, all the research I've done on the existing utilities, there is no easement.
The, the, the plat dedicates to the public. Gateway Boulevard is a public right of way in utilities and other purpose. That's how it's dedicated on the plat. And so, argument can be made that, that the utilities are there by virtue of that dedication to the public for utilities.
Yeah, we would look at, using the same agreement that we took over Gateway. Where it states in that agreement that the, the utility is responsible for any adjustments and relocations, just like it is under any public road.
In, in the takeover agreement.
Right.
And you look at item number sixteen.
Yeah, I remember.
So if we take over this other road, we'd be looking at the same. Uh, we can always work out something in the joint project agreement. At the type of, for the lights, if there's, there's, there might be some, depending on, for the lighting. We might be willing to cover the cost depending on where we go from here. It's, it's, any agreement, the attorney will tell you it's a negotiation, so. It's working together to come to an understanding that both parties can get the work done. And be, not necessarily happy with the agreement, but can live with it.
And that, that sounds very reasonable. I just would like kind of an idea of how much it's gonna cost the district. That's my biggest concern is, you know, this is gonna, this is gonna cost something.
I can tell you that by us taking over the road, you save three million dollars. Because that's what it's value gonna end up costing for the two roundabouts by the time we're set and done, for our end, so.
Well, and we're, we're all paying that too. Sorry, I didn't mean.
No, no, I understand, I understand, and we looked at it, you know, we didn't just wheelie around and take over the road. We looked at it and said, this is a road that's serving more than just your community. It is a throughway, there's people outside the community using it. It adds to our commu-, uh, our transportation system. And we said, that's why we said yes, we bought up the county standards that the developers did, and we took it over.
Well, if we could go out there to State Road eighty-two and Gateway Boulevard and put two roundabouts ahead, do you think that'll divert the traffic to go down eighty-two and stay off Gateway Boulevard?
Well, for some people, yes, because there are some people that don't want to drive through our own.
I walk, I walk the dog every morning on Gateway Boulevard. And I feel like I'm back home again in Indiana on the racetrack. They fly down that road. I mean, absolute, every single day. And when I go out and see where they're coming from, they're not Gateway residents, they're coming off eighty-two.
Oh, really?
And I'm cutting through to avoid the mess on Daniels.
Okay.
And then they come down there and they hit Daniels and Gateway Boulevard, they hit the mess again, so.
Well, school's traffic should take care of that. They'll probably still go.
I think we can do it ahead, a lot of the decisions we have to make relative to the things that they want to know, we can do pretty quickly. Because we're gonna want the upgrade, I'm assuming. I, I sure don't want to go back to the, the county generic signs, that, that's gonna make the city look like crap. Uh, so there, there might be a little discussion on the right of way, but we can do that quick. The one that's going to be the difficult one for us, where we bite the bullet, is what's the cost of the major, uh, utility relocation? The cost of the upgrades, oh, it's, it's gonna be a nice number, but it's not gonna be anywhere near that underground utility.
I, I think Tyler's gonna be able to give you a better number once, as he's going on, once he gets hired, gets working on it, sits down with us and says, like you said. You've got a lot of stuff under pavement now that's not encased in, you got a valve. It certainly doesn't make sense to encase twenty feet, and the other eighty feet is, is not encased. So we're willing, we'll work with you through that to try to reduce the cost and get a good system out there. Obviously, if you, you don't encase it, you know that if something does happen and that road gets shut down, your costs are gonna be extremely high between your M O T, your contractor, emergency contractor, and getting out there, getting that road back open, because all the residents will be calling you guys, why, why I can't drive through there? Because that's where we're sending them when they call us. So that's Gateway Utilities, the water being break, force being break, you know, whatever it is.
So we'll see you again on the third, an update?
Yes, ma'am, uh, we'll, on, by the third, we'll have a pretty good idea of, of costs that you can expect to occur.
Okay, I'd appreciate that.
We'll just give him an authorization later on to go ahead, uh, on some type of a time materials to do what he's doing, and then come back with a formal contract for the actual relocation. Now, all this negotiation and meeting stuff will be under just a, a front-end authorization.
We have our continuing services contract that has a roadway task that we're, that we're able to work under right now. But the, uh, the future work, yeah, would be its own task composition. That is all.
Roundabout.
For me and roundabouts.
We didn't have a status report in here, will you do that for the next meeting also?
Uh, yes, ma'am, we'll do one of those a month. I don't know why it was on this agenda, but it was on the last one, so we do that as the first meeting of the month.
Okay, since it was on the agenda, I'd ask.
Yeah, I don't know, sorry, I don't know why that's on there.
All right.
Yeah, all the time with us.
Thank you for your time.
Look forward to working with you on that agreements and having a safe intersections in the future.
Have a good evening, watch that intersection down there, it's bad.
I'm not going that way.
Unless you guys have anything else for me, that's, that's all for us tonight. Thank you, ma'am. The other?
Night, Tyler. A district attorney?
Yes, I didn't, uh, hold a task project update in the.
Okay.
Uh, as to cleaner phase two, get ready to record everything, so that should be done tomorrow or Monday. We wrapped that up completely. Uh, the legal ads, uh, we worked on arrangement where, uh, Chris and I, and I think Marilyn, Mark, I'll be placing the legal ads in the paper. And so we set the annual week schedule in, and it should be tomorrow's newspaper. And it is unfortunate, the news press is the only show in town, because they're incredibly prohibitively expensive. That little notice of the readings for the year cost four hundred seventy-five dollars.
You got it.
Four hundred seventy-four dollars and sixteen cents.
I was just, that's the only way they have attorney revenue.
Yeah. And that's, the legislature wants all of us to go to the website to notice it, but yet they still require this one to be in the newspaper, so it's unfortunate. Uh, reviewed Arborwood Phase Three plat, and I think Tyler compared some of his reviews and provided my comments to Chris. And so that's before, I don't want to copy your files at all. And, uh, working with, uh, Chris, the resolution for the S R F loan for the design work the next phase, that's gonna be the next board agenda, in my legal opinion. And we, the next amendment, I guess, is that new application or amendment?
Uh, new application.
New application, and it's gonna be the same format, so.
Yeah, we'll just be putting in the newer, newer budget.
Yeah, we had the birthing pain for the first one, after that, it's been very smooth. And hopefully the interest rate will be much lower with all the interest rates going down. And that's all.
Thank you, district management.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go through a couple of things briefly. We, uh, staff did put on, with help from sponsors, a twenty nineteen fishing challenge. And it was well-attended, thirty-nine children had registered. And we had sponsors, Sanibel Captiva banked on any of the funds for banners and trophies. They also brought coffee and donuts. And, uh, we had a couple volunteers from Solitude and the resident, were both there to help measure and record fish, mainscape. And Aquatic We Control and Aquagenics and Extreme Divers all donated raffle prizes, including the Bass Pro gift cards. So between the donated prizes and the trophies, everybody went home with something. And, uh, it was pretty well-attended, and everyone seemed to have a good time. And we're doing some maintenance work up at the pool, planning to do it, just some upgrades to some outdated equipment. Um, we have, uh, also recently advertised in the Florida Association of Special Districts, um, Florida Stormwater Association. And indeed, in Craigslist for the business manager and the lakes manager position. So those are open, and we've already been getting a fair amount of applicants. Even though sometime I wonder where they come from, because one fellow's background was twelve years of directing high school bands. So, gave me a few ideas, but.
Everybody's gotta do something.
First hire.
Sounds like politicians.
And we, we're wrapping up with F D E P, and also the property owners had a little waste spill down there by the creative coatings. They had a breached barrel, and ended up washing the paint coating into the storm drain, which is probably a big mistake, because they had S W S trucks there for three days vacuuming out the whole system. None of it got to the lakes, but they made them take some soil samples and a few other tests, so. And we completed the stormwater conveyance project that we had Fish Brothers working on, starting over at the Stony Brook Canal and going all the way over through Hidden Links and rounding the corner behind Prado and Pistoia. The board originally budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the job, the base camp contract was one twenty-five. Um, we did purchase order, I mean, changed order that up. We added some additional stone and sod in both those flowways. And the bottom line is, we spent a hundred and fifty-two thousand out of a hundred and fifty thousand. One thing we haven't gotten completed yet, though, is we're working to clean the flowway out in I seventy-five. And I've been working for five months with the people at Colonial, and originally they were, come on in, let's schedule it. And, uh, then we sent them over the license agreement, it came to a screeching halt. Um, through legal review with their attorneys, last month I called them, they said they were taking it to their board for a full vote in consideration. And I called them again last week, and they said, oh, we're still getting ready to take it to the board. So I don't have their permission yet to access the property. I did remind them that if that flowway starts backing up, the first place it will back up will be in Colonial.
Yeah, and Chris is great, or Vanceick their attorney still?
Yes.
Uh, would it be, I mean, if Cal's still their manager?
Yeah.
Would, do you think it would be appropriate for me to give Greg a call? I know, he's right down the street from me.
Yeah, give him a call.
He's a streetblock away from my office.
Talked to Cal, the folks have been very nice and helpful.
I'll find out what Greg's issues are.
Been out there on the site, so, and I told them it was just a generic license agreement that, you know, if they had anything they wanted to change, just send it back.
Chris, where are we on the, uh, removal of the blockages from the eighty-four inch storm sewer? That were the golf course, the twin eighty-fours that's got the blockage? I thought that was in that contract also.
Well, it is, and I actually, they sent me the film, they ran a submarine through there the other day, and all the pipes even coming out were clear, there wasn't anything in front of them. And I was gonna show you that.
Those twin eighty-fours, we have the pictures of the, uh, limestone setting at the entrance right outside the concrete box. It's been there for twenty-five years.
Hey, now, that's what I thought I remember hearing you say.
Unless somebody went in there and got one heck of big arms to lift those stones up, with the guy that was in there with the TV camera, he couldn't budge them.
I'll, I'll show you that video, we can still go in there and work on it. Matter of fact, we talked about it before the project, and look at using the coming along off one of those trees to pull them out.
Pull them out.
And they sent the sub down and sent me the video and said, there's nothing here that needs to move. So I'll, I'll share the video with you, but we can go back in there.
Oh, where they would disappear to, because those stones were big.
And it's, uh, it's a lot easier to get in there now, with a little access road. But as soon as I get, um, permission or get that granted from Colonial, we're still working on them to try to get out there.
Anybody have any other questions for Chris under the management authority?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I had was, uh, somebody needs to go least over into Gateway Greens and look at the wetlands. They are loaded, loaded with exotics, and we're, we're getting a, uh, a crop of thalia like we have never, ever had before. In fact, it's green everywhere, and weeds in wetlands that look like nobody has, has touched them. So I'm wondering if our vendors are going on, because they're parallel with the golf course or, or what? They do the spray applications of the ponds, but the wetlands over on the golf course are pretty, pretty bad looking.
I'll, I'll check and see what's going.
I didn't know what they were like in other areas, because those are the only ones I see.
They're bad.
I'm sorry?
They're bad.
They're bad overtures too?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to take and go and take a visit of our, uh, wetlands and, uh, verify that the vendor is, uh, doing their, doing their work.
I know there, there was a walkthrough last week that was done, I think it included those preserves, so let me get the report back.
Okay.
This is Larry?
Yes.
At our last meeting, you were gonna get the cost of having to send out the budget announcement again?
The second time?
The second time.
I did not get that. I, uh, I have an invoice for the second publishing, but not the cost to do that.
Okay.
I'll give it to Stephen, we'll get a number.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else? Four A. It's you, Stephen.
Well, I, I think we're gonna have to pass on this one. Um, we do not have a representative from Burden and Toons here.
Okay.
Uh, he actually thought I was gonna call in for it. But the board had been very specific that they would prefer representative here, so I had him kind of going back and forth with him. So he's gonna get back with me with a, a new meeting that he can attend.
Okay, the power point.
Yeah, and Stephen, has it been submitted to the state or?
Yes, it has.
Okay, because there's a timeframe with the statute.
Right, there is, yeah, it was submitted months ago. Um, now, he, he has also, just kind of maybe as an FYI, I mean, again, part of the assignment for him this year was to do a review of the assessments role. So he has completed a preliminary of that, I actually have a, a call with him tomorrow to go over it. Uh, what he has found, most of what he's submitted so far is the same parcels that we've already talked about and we already know about, uh, particular, the golf courses. Uh, so there's nothing particularly new, but that is gonna, I don't know if we'll have that for the next meeting, but I did want to, uh, mention that that has not been forgotten, that, you know, he did do that, and that will be presented.
Thank you. Four B, utility expenditure for bypass pumps.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, utility manager. Um, before I get started, Alan Curry here is with, is here, uh, with Thompson Pump. Um, I'll let him come up here and talk to y'all for a minute, uh, about Thompson Pump.
If you want to pass these rounds, um, just something to kind of look at. How's everybody doing? Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Pretty interesting amount of roundabout. So much noise.
We'd rather have a stoplight.
Well, we have, I live around East Coast of Florida, and we actually have a lot of them, and they actually, they seem to work well for us, you know, we have heavy traffic patterns, but anyway. Uh, what I was asked to come and speak to you about was a little about Thompson Pump and what, uh, Gateway and Thompson have been doing for the past couple of years, and why we've been conducting so much business together, and hopefully we're gonna continue into the future. Um, so Thompson Pump is a Florida-based pump manufacturer. We actually build all of our own equipment, as opposed to a assembler, which we like to refer to as other companies. They just purchase parts from different companies, and they assemble them, they try to sell pumps that way. Uh, we're based out of Port Orange, Florida, so we are Florida-based, and we are an international company. Uh, well, next week, we're actually launching off our fiftieth anniversary. Um, but yeah, we still are a family-owned and operated company, um, privately held. So we're pretty, we're very proud about that. And as a manufacturer, um, so everything is basically, is built in the United States, right here in the state, and, uh, I'm sorry, just, I'm trying to thought there. Um, but yeah, so we are more American manufacturer. And by purchasing what, um, Kenny and, um, Chris have been doing, has been purchasing through the Florida Sheriff's contract, is everybody familiar with, with that contract? So basically what it is, it's a, it's a contract that is, we, we, we as a company bid it, we bid it every year. Um, and what they do is basically, they perform it like a public bid would work, if you were to actually do it yourselves. You know, take, take bids from different companies, um, you know, you have the choice of going with low bidder, or you have to do the vetting process and make sure that their specification, your specification is met and do all the vetting process. Well, the Florida Sheriff's Association does that, does that for you, and allows government entities to use that contract, and all the pricing is, 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 uh, public record. So there's nothing that, when I send a quote to Chris and Kenny, it's, they can verify it by going to the Florida Sheriff's contract and looking at it and seeing exactly where I got all my pricing from. So there's nothing hitting, there's no secret agenda, and you're actually getting, um, a significant discount by using that contract. And you keep away from having any soft costs of doing your own public bid. So it's, it's very beneficial for, uh, municipalities to go down that road, especially if you don't have a large staff, or you don't have the time to do, to dig into, um, equipment purchases like that. And, uh, so anyway, uh, what, what we've recently done is, uh, besides portable pumps that are on trailers, uh, we installed the first permanently mounted bypass pump at Stony Brook Station, Stony Brook Lift Station, um, or Development, there's more than one lift station in there, but. If everybody, I don't know if everybody's been through there, you see at the main entrance?
It's the main station.
Correct. Um, that's what I'm giving you a picture of there, that's not, obviously that's not the station, but it's something for you to refer to. So, uh, by doing so, um, by putting that pump in there, uh, you're basically giving yourself a, a twenty-four hour or permanent redundancy. So if for some reason that, that pump station's electronic pumps that are in there go down, break, the power goes out, that backup pump that is, that is put in there will, is able to do the work of both pumps that are in that station. So you're, you're getting a list, uh, eliminate the, the risk of having a sanitary station overflow or backing up into people's homes. So a lot of people ask, why, why don't you just use a generator instead of a backup pump? Well, a generator has good, and it's good for one purpose and one purpose only, that's to create electricity. I could probably name ten different things or fifteen different things that can actually happen in a lift station besides the, the power going out. So if the power does go out, this pump will actually operate, because the electric submersible pumps that in the station will not work. If for some reason you're slight, um, in Florida, this is a popular one, is the lift stations get hit by lightning, knocks all like, knocks all electric circuitry out in that station. Okay, so putting a generator there isn't gonna do any good when all the circuitry is gone. So that, by having that, that diesel-mounted pump there, it's a mechanical energy over electrical energy. So you never lose a function of what the station's meant to do. The station is meant to pump wastewater from the, from the development. The station is meant to pump wastewater from the, from the development to the wastewater treatment plant. So basically what you're doing is adding a third, a third pump that's run, that's gonna be run on diesel fuel. So it's very, it's superior to a generator is what I'm trying to say. So what they're doing with their infrastructure, Chris and Kenny are doing with the infrastructure plan is, is, is actually very innovative. It's, it's, it's what, it's what municipalities are moving towards in the future. They're moving away from generators and they're moving into putting these kind of pumps on every single lift station. You know, the best way to start is start your biggest, your master stations, and eventually work your way down, and that's the way peers that we're doing right now. Cause we're, uh, they've given a proposal for B nine, B nine station and their master station. And typically, I think what we're looking to do is maybe doing one a year, and eventually you're gonna have all your master stations covered. And you can use the portable pumps that they've also purchased in the meantime that are able to go around to the smaller stations.
What trips the controls onto the Thompson?
It's a, so glad you asked that. So that's what, that's another nice thing is obviously it can be run unattended. So what sets it off is we have a set of what we call electronic floats. They float in the water, and once the station fills to a certain, once, once the lift station fills to a certain level, the pump kicks on, turns itself on, and then it'll pump the station down, and as these floats fall, fall back down to a lower level, the pump kicks off. Another thing that's nice about that is generators, when generators sense AC power loss or FPL power loss, they kick on automatically. Whether you need power or not, it'll run, and it'll run until the power is restored. And by using the pumps in the system I just told you about, that pump only runs when it's needed. So you're gonna save a lot in fuel. You're not gonna have that hum of a generator going all the time, possibly for three, four days. You're only gonna have it for fifteen, twenty minutes per hour, something like that. But the fuel cost is significant. The footprint is pretty much identical to what a generator is. But it doesn't have to be load tested, which has to be done by electrician every year, which is usually pretty expensive, on top of the regular maintenance of just keeping up a diesel engine. So in the long run, it's, it's, there's, it's, it's a cost bene, cost benefit to you by using, by using pumps.
So when you have, uh, extra-large peaks, we could have both the mainline pumps and the Thompson come on.
You could.
That's what I'm saying, extra-large peaks, like we'd have an inflow result, like a storm, it'll get a lot of water coming in. Both could run together, but typically they jump.
Well, you could, usually the station is designed for the two submersible pumps that they can run together because they have to have the great-sized pipe going out. So once you kick that third pump on, if, if your diameter of your pipe going out of the station isn't large enough, you can't water in, water out. You can only put so much out, you can, uh, you can take so much in, you can only put so much out.
And then are these covered? Yes, they're covered. They're encased, they're enclosed.
Silent, they're, they're in one silent, rather than silent case.
And we're able to customize, which there's, we did some cus, custom things for, for the district, so, um, that's one of the things that's beneficial by going through, through a pump manufacturer and not through, I say, like an assembler. Anything else I can add? And like I said, we have announced, they also purchased some portable units, which are obviously able to move around. Um, they can set them up and they can leave those unattended also. They start and stop on the same system that I just explained with the fluid system. So, so you have the ability, you don't need a technician. Once it's set up, you don't need a technician out there sitting there with you.
Why would the Florida Sheriff's Association be involved in picking packing such pumps?
I'll tell you why. They, they make a lot of money off of it.
They do?
Yeah, they do. They get a percentage of everything that we sell through them, but it's, it's administrative. I mean, they, they do a lot of administrative work. Like I said, you know, they might get five bid packages from five different pump manufacturers, and they have to go through them all to bet all of them, and then usually come down to three. We, we've held that contract for, as long as I can remember, it's probably like about two thousand eight.
Do they have the test of knowledge to be able to analyze this kind of bidding?
They do, buy that stuff all the time.
Um, they, 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 they talk to us about stuff, and then they design a specification. They do it for automobiles, police cars, uh, anything you could, skid loaders, generator. I mean, they have so much equipment and, uh, like I said, they make money off of it. So they get a percentage of everything that's sold through that contract.
They'll call me and text out for a donation.
Yeah, well, hey, you asked the question, I'm just telling you, but it's, it's, it's what, what they, the percentage that they get is, is much more cost-effective than what it would cost you in soft costs to actually do your own bidding. Um, it's just, it's just very difficult. People, the average is fifteen thousand dollars per bid is what, what a municipality would spend doing their own private bid.
Thank you. Uh, how many gallons of diesel fuel are on site to make sure that this equipment can run when it's needed?
That, that, uh, the one we put in Stony Brook and the one we're gonna, we're actually gonna put in the new high school you mentioned earlier, we're gonna have a pump there. And, uh, also that B nine station. What we're doing is we've, we're staying on a seventy-two hour run period, a seventy-two, seventy-two hour consistent run period is what, what we're trying to accomplish. It had a run straight, which it won't do. But anyway, to answer your question, it's a hundred and fifty gallons in the one in Stony Brook. The one at the high school will be the same, and this one at B nine will also be the same, and that'll give you seventy-two hours of continuous runtime.
And where it has to be replenished first, or diesel coming from?
We're gonna have to send a truck in.
Pardon?
Yeah, send a truck in. It'll be refilled with a truck, yeah. Which is great for a hurricane that you, you know, like I said, you, I tell you seventy-two hours, but technically you probably have a week and a half, really, if, if, with the way that it would run.
Great.
Um, so anyway, what, what I'm trying to say, what, what the money that they're spending for this equipment is, is, is well warranted and it's being well spent. It's, it's innovative and, um, it's a good infrastructure plan that they're thinking ahead in the future, because if for some reason you did have a sanitary station overflow back up into houses, it's gonna be much more expensive than it would cost for what the price of these, what the price of these units are. Um, and then if you get much any fines, what you will get, it's, it's very costly. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. If you have any.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I have one.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. No, I wanna thank you for coming, but I also wanted to say that Mr. Hall explained all this to me when he was putting the Stony Brook pump in. And he explained how it works, so it was nice to.
Good, good. Well, hopefully you don't have to run it a lot. Um, you know, you have a lot of power, but anyway, it's there, and I think they're, they are running and exercising it every week so that it is up to snuff when you actually will need it.
Well, when we had concerns about Dorian headed this way, I was like, that was in.
Yeah, we were glad we got it here. We had a little delay, but we're glad we got it here, so. Anything else I can touch on, let me know.
Any motion or approval?
So, I, I think, uh, did you wanna add anything, Kenny?
Uh, Mr. Tinkler, with the, the three pumps running, we did the scenario that is a, um, our electrician solved that problem. We do not have. The only scenario that I could come up with was the pumps were running, the power went out, the Thompson pump kicked on, and then.
In a short period of time.
In a short period of time, and our electrician solved that problem. And, um, Mr. Guy, uh, fuel, we have a onsite fuel storage, and we've just put, uh, a hundred, ninety-gallon diesel fuel tank on a truck that we can deliver the fuel to onsite, um, to the pumps, uh, should they run out of fuel. And during Irma, we ran the generator at Arizo in Pelican Preserve, ran continuously for four days before power was restored. And we were running, uh, we ran up to day six before we really started to run. Be understanding, uh, I'd say we ran it through about day six until we started to realize we're gonna have a fuel problem here in about two days. So on the twenty-twenty-one budget, we'll be coming back with a fuel issue, a larger fuel tank capacity.
Go ahead.
Uh, from the time we approved this recommendation until the pump was manufactured and installed and tested and, oh, it was working, how long's that longer?
Six to seven months.
Six to seven months.
Yes, from start to, start to finish, from the time that we, today until the time that it's in online and running, functioning, six to seven months.
Not a stock shelf item.
Mine's, well, I know, that's why I asked that. Time to get cracking.
Give us the dry season. Uh, you exercises?
Yes, they run, it runs fifteen, or runs a full cycle, which is seventeen minutes. Uh, we'll run it usually.
What's a week?
It's set to run once a week. I run it, you know, two, sometimes two, three.
We need a motion to approve.
You did, and she seconded, so I just wanted to see if Kenny had anything you wanted to add. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You've got it, Ken. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks for coming in.
And Cheryl was gonna mention too, and we had a couple of conversations with the school. They, they have to use the new high school as an emergency shelter. And their plans are to put in a backup generator, the pump station they're building, and like a thirty-thousand gallon holding tank to keep the capacity in. And we have drawings in the background information for those Thompson pumps, and they're gonna be installing one and moving a generator at that school and also the other high school with their appointment. So evidently, they, they like the idea.
Do you have a policy on that?
No.
Kind of, but, uh, passed muster with them, and as I said, a lot of the utilities are moving in that direction.
All the Sheriff's Association. Are getting that pump running. I hear they're right out there.
And that, uh, that pricing is very good coming off that contract. It's about a fifteen to eighteen percent difference over street price for that unit.
And you get the discount on the administrative fees.
Oh, yeah, it's straight purchase.
So four C, the SRF loan documents, those are coming back?
Yes, we'll be bringing those back at the next meeting.
So that gives us to four D, insurance.
And this was, uh, basically our yearly renewal we've been doing with FMIT, Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. And we did, uh, put it out to bid to a couple of other companies this year, and EGIS did not get their quote in in time. And our renewal is October first, but, uh, another outfit, PRIA, the Public Risk Insurance Advisors, which they have a number of public entities on their client list, including a large number of special districts, and they provided a bid sheet on like-to-like coverage. And the premium was ninety-two hundred and seventy-two dollars a year less, or seven hundred and seventy-two dollars a month. And we think that the coverages are basically the same across the board, and so we're just looking at it as a way to save some money. And I'd say our staff has a long relationship with FMIT, but our staff doesn't. It's a long time. Oh, yeah, they're, they're, they're a solid company all the way around, and, uh, said I wasn't just gonna do the renewal without going out to bid and getting some other prices.
I like the cost savings.
Are you ready for a motion to approve?
Amy. Okay, got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion?
Question?
Go ahead.
I brought it up a while ago with the guys who were from the county. What coverage do they have, or do we have any coverage? That if we would have, notwithstanding the, the roundabout now, but like we had out there on Gateway Boulevard and Gateway Greens Drive. That one was easy. It was a sidewalk. But if that would have occurred in the middle of the intersection, do we have any insurance coverage on that?
No.
Nothing?
No, the only thing we have to cover something like that is reserves, and obviously when you get a large water line that could disrupt, uh, Gateway Boulevard, um, you know, you go through a quarter million dollars real fast.
Well, my question is, is what's the cost for avoidance of that risk?
Well, I, uh, put out two feelers today to get potential policies and what the premiums are for that. It's not something you see very often, um, but if there's a product.
The reason I bring it up is we, we learned once with one that occurred there at Gateway Greens entrance, and we know there are other ticking bombs out there. If, if we can go out there and get a price that would be reasonable, it might not be a bad idea to take and throw that in on the insurance premium. In fact, I'd be willing to take and pay the ninety-two hundred we saved to buy the coverage.
Oh, I thought you were gonna pay for it the way you covered it.
That, that I was not personal. No, I, I'm worried about that. We've got an exposure there, and we were lucky on that one.
You're gonna have a big deductible if you get a policy like that.
I was gonna ask that next, Bill. I, I just wanna know what's the numbers, and it may be that roll the dice and don't do it. But if it's a reasonable number and the deductible's a reasonable number, I think we ought to look at it.
I'm, I am getting those numbers for you, and that's something we'll do, uh, in parallel or outside of this.
But probably an add-on if it, if it's attractive.
Or might be a separate standalone company that just provides.
Could be that.
Would it be worth, is this have a, um, is this tied to a certain date that we need to?
October first.
And that this, this, this policy renewal is.
But there's no reason why it couldn't be handled as an add-on if it was an attractive thing, but I think Bill probably hit the nail on the head.
My, my only concern is, let's say you, you put feelers out in our, in FM, what is it?
FMIT.
FMIT comes back and they're more favorable than the other, and it ends up, you know, but.
We'll have to tell them the stage already left them. But it would be interesting, but I have a feeling Bill's right, that the deductible might be enough to choke a horse, but let's see what it is.
I'll, I'll get those numbers. Also, if I can add too, last, last Friday, I was up in Tampa for maintenance of stormwater best management practices. And a couple of things, just look at how, uh, different counties are handling all their stormwater maintenance. Whether it's, uh, Pensacola did one, and it was interesting. They looked at contract maintenance versus their own in-house. And when it came to doing the stormwater ponds, um, it was about twenty percent cheaper to contract it out, but when it came to wetlands maintenance and preserves, it was cheaper to do it in-house. And that's another one, City of Lakeland. The reason I brought it up is they have a lot of different accounting ways that they assign their personnel and their resources. And Mr. Tinkler, you were talking a few times, brought up a back truck. And a low-end back truck is two hundred and fifty or two hundred and seventy-five thousand. A high-end one could be half a million dollars. And, and they're maintenance-intensive, but one thing he did, and in Lakeland, their philosophy is keep the trash out of the storm system instead of trying to fish it out. And they, they literally downtown use their back truck because they said when they use a street sweeper, A, they're filling it up with water, and B, they're blowing dirty mud against the curbs anyway, which when it rains flows into their system, which becomes silt, and another issue, uh, but they vacuum theirs. And they also had some baskets that they use when they have downtown parades and heavy events, um, that they drop these baskets into the storm drains and then fish them out with the truck. And one they had, it was interesting that they had two clogs in, but they found twenty ladies' purses. Twenty ladies' purses.
Fifty.
With the R's attached.
And at first, they were all wondering, and then they started looking at the incidences of the robberies in the first matches in the area, and it was an area right where they were. So what the sheriff put up, he, he said he went there again, and one lady said, yeah, I almost cleaned a few of them up. They were still in good shape.
The one that blew my mind was this car that was twenty-some years in the ditch over there. They did real good pond maintenance over there in that community. It's right, right next to the shore. In Wellington, where they found the body.
But anyway, they, they talked up the back trucks, but they said, you know, on that maintenance cost and five hundred thousand to purchase one, and you need two people and two CDLs and.
Yeah, you, you, that maintenance is true on those things, big maintenance.
All right, and we have a motion and a second on the insurance renewal approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That brings us to supervisor comments. Mr. Tinkler?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Bates?
Yeah, I have just, just two. Um, I, I think we have limited to no control over, um, this particular item, but as much effort as we, the district, have made to continue to improve the community, uh, to keep things, you know, landscaping and our facilities up to speed, and we've got new facilities coming in, I just have concerns about seven-eleven. Um, just the, if you look at the landscaping, it doesn't seem like it's maintained. And just the overall structure of the building, uh, does not seem like it is in par with other, uh, standards that we have in, in the community from other businesses, commercial, uh, properties and, and residential. So I, I don't know what we can do, but I thought I'd just bring it up to this, to this board, uh, to see if anyone felt the same, or, uh, you know, if they had any creative ideas on, you know, at least maybe bringing our concerns to their attention.
Well, one, I'm not aware that there are under any association. So that makes it difficult, cause I'm not aware that there are any standards outside of an association. I know we don't have any. So I don't know what we would use to hold on it, other than getting into some things like cleanliness or that, that type of a deal. But when I started with a highway guy there a while ago, and after that last meeting we had, they were talking about moving the entrance of an Alipa. The damn thing's already on our property. It's not even on their property. So I. So I just don't think that the people that run those type of facilities are really uh into this kind of a deal. Maintaining these places, it's land ban there, they're.
You can look at the roof on the one that's on State Road 82, that, that's black, it's just totally black.
Well, I mean, even just looking at the, the flooring in there and just the, even the color of the paint.
I mean, what, two areas might be, I don't know what the development order was, this was probably a long time ago for that development. What it requires as far as landscape buffers and landscaping and whether or not it's been kept up because routinely that's what they'll let go by the wayside. And that would require somebody pulling those plans and seeing if they're compliant and if not contacting code enforcement just gently. That's just one aspect as far as the buffering. And if uh, if they don't have an easement for that driveway over the district property.
Could be some whatever.
That's what, that's what I was, I'm glad somebody did on that.
What I was thinking is, you know, even just a polite letter saying, hey, we just come to our attention that, you know, the current state of the facilities could use, you know, some attention. And oh, by the way, we, I doubt that your entrance is not only.
There might be an easement though, no one.
The rent check is.
It's been there quite a while. And so the WCI has made it provide them an easement over that, but I can check that. But uh, somebody may wanna pull the older, the older plans that's been around for, for at least 20-some-odd years.